You know, maybe you get the news cameras out there, you know, the newspaper taking pictures and all different things, right? But that is like zero for the kingdom. And one of the things, and you guys just kind of break this down for yourself, what I always ask myself is this, before I do anything or I'm involved in anything, I always ask this one question, what does God get out of it? That's the question. If we're supposed to be His servant and over His business, right? Then we should just be asking, what does God get out of it? And if He's not getting anything out of it, then, you know, maybe complain about it, maybe say, yeah, you can go do that if you want to do that, right? But again, I would always ask, what does He get out of it? Right? And so, uh, so one thing I did want to share, I got a little text from Sister Teresa earlier, and she, she's not on today. She was showing us a toothache, but she went out there and she just fought the guys in the car, someone, and she started talking to them about Jesus. And so they didn't receive it that well, but you know what he did? So praise the Lord, he gave, he gave her that function to go do that, right? And so we thank God for her. Uh, I think Brother Todd is on, I just wanted to share, I don't know if you guys saw the text, but a few days ago, I think it was, uh, over the weekend, he sent down a request and because the Lord stirred his heart to go outside, right? So it was kind of a testimony. And so Brother Todd, can you just share a little bit about what happened, or you want?
Yeah, um, yeah, I could share about it. So basically, the Lord was, so I, I went, did an evangelism trip in the morning and that went well, but the Lord said, "Go out Tatsuya, go outside another time." And so I'm like, "Okay, Lord," and so I went outside. And then near my house, on the 101 Highway, so there's a, a street crossing the 101 Highway, Highway, and there was a man who was suicidal and who, uh, was about to jump off the one, off the bridge onto the highway and to commit suicide that way. And so be, moments before he did that, I preached the gospel to him, because the Lord really stirred in my heart. And basically, he, uh, he said, "Oh, go to, ta-talk to my girlfriend about it." And then, so the girlfriend came rushing to him, and then he ju- tried to jump off the bridge. His girlfriend and I grabbed him, so he wouldn't jump off the bridge. And, um, and then we pulled him down, and once we did that, he cried a little bit. And then, um, and then I rushed back home, because I was like really close to my home, called the police. But at that time, like his girlfriend and this guy was gone, they ran away. But anyways, I got to preach the gospel to them, um, and hopefully, I, I've been praying that the Lord would touch him. It, the preaching the gospel wasn't that well, but at least my, the point was made, you know, that he needs to trust in Jesus, yeah. And then, you know, so-
Amen.
Amen. You did a great job to the Lord.
Yeah, you know, it was serious though, because if he died right there without hearing the true gospel, he would have gone to hell. So like, I mean, I had to do it.
Amen. Yeah, can you just imagine this though? He's sitting at home, right? Maybe watching TV, whatever he's doing, and all of a sudden the Lord just go back out and go preach the gospel. And he's like, "Okay," and so he goes, right? Can you imagine if he was disobedient? This guy would have lost his natural life and his eternal soul. But he went over there and he saw him, and the first thing he does is start sharing the gospel. And then this guy tries to jump in, you know, so I'm sure there was some spiritual work going on there, but thank God, but he said, Brother Todd, if you notice what he said, is that after he shared the gospel, he started crying a little bit, that's the Holy Spirit. And so see, God never leaves us by ourself, He's right there with us. And so, you know, thank God for that, you know, when, when, I was just thinking about, look at the irony. These people, hundreds of people, over here getting these Easter baskets ready, it has nothing to do with God, and then God has this guy over here, just one guy, that's all God needs, is one guy. And so, thank you for sharing that story, brother. Um, again, uh, we covered in chapter 11 of Romans, how Israel was cut off from the branches because of unbelief, right? And so this is something that really the Lord has impressed me upon me was, to really drill down on that and to really grab a hold of that, that because of Israel's disobedience, and repeated disobedience, He set them aside and He blinded them. That's why to me, just this is just a separate note, there's a lot of churches that are falling into this Hebrewism, right? And what they do is that they try to celebrate the, what they call the Shabbat, the Sabbath, they try to do the Seder meal, they try to do the stuff that, that the Jews do ritually, right? But the Jews don't have a relationship with God, why would you do that? In fact, God set them aside and He blinded them. Why did He blind them? For us, so we can believe, right? That's what we covered, we were God's plan B, and thank God for that, and we're gonna read that. And so He came and said, "Okay, you guys don't want to be a part of my party? You guys don't want to be a part of me and eternal life? I'm gonna go get another group." And so that's all of us, and so that's what Paul was saying in chapter 11. We saw that we are to remain humble, because we did not find God, He found us. And the only reason we came looking, uh, we, the only reason He came looking for us is because again, the Jews were not coming. Okay, I'm just gonna read this, this is from Romans 11, we read it last week, but it says this, "You, you will say that branches were broken off, that I may be grafted in." We said, well said, because of unbelief, they were broken off, and you stand by faith. Do not be haughty, right? In other words, prideful, because you're in. Or if God, you know, like sometimes you used to want to get into a nightclub, right? They had a big old line and everything, you got in, you're looking at your friend like, "Hey, I got in." He's saying, "Don't be like that," right? Or if God did not spare the natural branches, He may not spare you neither. Therefore, to spare the goodness and severity of God, on those who, so see the contrast? The goodness and severity of God, right? Uh, He's very black and white. On those who felt severity, right? The Jews, because He cut them up and He blinded them with unbelief, right? Or towards you, all of us, the, the, the Gentiles, goodness, if you continue in His goodness. How do you continue in His goodness? By faith, by keeping your faith and believing in Him. Otherwise, you also will be cut off. We know for true born again believers, that can't happen, because the Holy Spirit is in us to make sure that we'll never stop believing. Verse 23, "And they also, if they do not continue in unbelief, will be grafted back in, for God is able to grasp them back in again. For if you were cut out of the olive tree, which is wild by nature," right? He's using a comparison, because this is a, a, uh, a, an olive tree that's been groomed, right? Or cruel and all these different things. But God went out and got a wild olive tree, and again, we already covered this, we were all wild at some times, right? Before God came and got us, we were all wild, in fact, I was reading Romans 5, it says this, "For when we were still without strength, in due time Christ died for the ungodly." That's us, that's the wild olive branch, the olive tree. "For scarcity for a righteous man will one die, yet perhaps for a good man, someone would even dare to die." But God demonstrated His own love towards us, in that while we were still sinners, Christ died for us. Isn't that amazing?
Amen. Amen. And that's in the book of Romans, I, brother.
Yeah, Romans 5, yeah, yeah. And so again, here we go, going back to, to, uh, Romans 11.
New Testament or Old Testament?
New Testament, Romans, yeah. "For if we were cut out of the olive tree, which is wild by nature, we were all wild, and were crafted in contrary to nature into a cultivated olive tree, how much more will lead, because of the Jews, who are natural branches, be crafted in their own olive tree?" Right? Because God cut them out, but eventually He's gonna put them back in, but just not now. Right now, they're under judgment, and we're gonna read about that, right? "For I do not desire, brother, that you should be ignorant of this mystery, lest you should be wise in your own opinion." So in other words, He's saying, "You gotta understand that you, we were all God's plan B." Remember Paul, he was on his way to arrest the Jews? And to feed them all up and to take them to prison, and all of us? We were all hanging out at the nightclub, we were all using drugs, we were all selling drugs, drinking, we were all crazy, right? But God came and had mercy upon us and said, "Hey, you wild guys are all over wild. You guys are now gonna be called my children, not my people, my children." And we're looking, "No, we can't be your children, because we're all sinners." He said, "Yes, I know that, but I'm gonna give my own son for your life." Who the heck would do that?
Praise the Lord.
That's what God the Father did. Right? And so that's why He says- "I desire, brother, that you should not be ignorant of this mystery, lest you should be wise in your own opinion, that blindness is, is in part has happened to Israel, until the fullness of the Gentiles has come in, which is all of us." So again, God has blinded them supernaturally, right? That's why they can't see Jesus in the Bible, and it's very hard to talk to them, right? It's because it's, it's the supernatural judgment of God. But for us, it's open, He's like, "Come on, you guys come." And we're gonna see that, okay? Look at this, they had unbelief, right? But we know from Romans 8, that Romans just keeps popping up, and it's just a powerful book. It says, "And we know that all things work together for good, to those who love God, to those who are called according to His purpose," that's Romans 8:28. Okay? Now, at the end of chapter 11, we saw Paul out of nowhere just proclaim this prayer to God. And this is what he said, because he's talking about how they didn't believe, so instead of just throwing the whole, you know, the, the whole, the, the, the baby away with the, with the, with the bathwater, right? You know, the expression? He decided to go get all of us and bring us in, right? And so this is what he says, he says, "All the depth of the riches, both of the wisdom and knowledge of God, how unsearchable are His judgments and His ways past finding out." We can't comprehend them, He's got so many things working all at the same time. It's just so amazing how God does, God does these things. He's on top of everything, it's almost like a gigantic clock in the universe, and spiritually, and He's working all things. Think about that, billions of angels, a million, hundreds of millions of angels, all, eight million people on the world, plus all the creatures, and He knows where everything is all at the same time. And He's having all these conversations with different people, hundreds of millions of people, all different angels, He's talking to them, He's talking to some of us here, some of the people on earth, right? He's guarding the animals, He's feeding the animals, all of it, all at the same time. "For who has known the mind of the Lord, or who has become His counselor, or who has first given to Him, and then shall be paid to Him? For of Him, and through Him, and to Him are all things," right? Oh, that's a powerful statement right there. "For of Him, and through Him, and to Him are all things, to whom be glory forever and ever." Ah, he just broke out with that wonderful phrase. Okay, now, getting back to where we're gonna go right now, Romans 1:1. Remember I said that there's two super big words in the Bible? Does anybody remember what they are? I'm telling you, that's, I'm asking the question, it's better than the mute button.
If I know, yes, therefore-
Yep, there you go, therefore, there one.
And therefore, and therefore-
Yep, that's it, Sister, yeah, Sister Molly Scotty, it's therefore and if.
And now, amen.
Those are the two biggest, biggest words in the Bible. And so, and the reason is because if is a condition, so a lot of people forget that if, they just claim the promise. But like the Lord Jesus said, "If you love Me, you will obey Me," right? So there's a lot of times, there's conditions given, and the therefore is there because at least something just happened before that word is given. And so when there's a therefore, you gotta go look to see why He's saying therefore, you gotta see what's behind it, okay? So now we look at chapter 11, and chapter 11 told us that we were God's plan B, because of the Jews' unbelief. And so now He went to the Gentiles, right? And because of all this miraculous thing that God did, that we were fighting Him, we were sinners, we were that o- wild olive branch, right? The olive tree, just wild out in the desert, right? He went over there and jelly-cut branches and said, "Okay, I'm putting you guys in." And like, "Who, where did I end up over here? How did I end up in church?" Because God does those things, right? And so because of all those things, He says, in verse one, it says, "I beseech you," in other words, beg to you, "therefore," because of all that we just explained, that we weren't even God's original plan, but He made this plan just for us. By the mercies of God, we just saw that He had mercy on us, right? He blinded the Jews in His frustration, or in his, whatever it is in His anger, He blinded them, but He chose to have mercy on us, that you present your body as a living sacrifice, wholly unacceptable to God, which is your reasonable service, right? Does that make sense? God did move the Jews out, when found out about us, you know, again, out using drugs, doctoring drugs, uh, drinking and all that kind of stuff, and He said, "No, you too, I'm gonna clean you up and I'm bringing you in." Because of all these things, we are now to present our bodies as a living sacrifice back to God, right? And then there's verse two, chapter 2, verse two. It says, "Not only present your bodies as a living sacrifice, but ready to do God's work." Like Brother Todd was ready, the Lord told him to go outside, he went outside, and look what He gave him to do, right? But the second thing is this, "And do not be conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind." That means, the world's telling you right now, "We got this corona thing, we got this corona thing beat, we can do it." And God, we know, we can't do nothing, it's gonna be God's mercy go take care of it. It's not gonna be the scientists, it's not gonna be the, the president, it's not gonna be the governors, it's not gonna be none of those things, those things are just quoted in this to God. And so when He decides, right? That you may prove what is that good and acceptable and perfect reward. So again, what we're gonna do is now we're gonna go back and see how special God treated us. I'm telling you, you know how you have the news, and all of a sudden, there's a $500 million on the Super Lotto? Right? And all of a sudden, because it's $500 million, a half a billion dollars, everybody's lining up, and they start telling you, "You got four chances to be hit by lightning five times in one day to win that thing." But everybody still lines up, right? Well, guess what? We won the super, super Lotto, because out of nowhere, we weren't even part of the panic, I said, "You, you're coming." You're like, "Who, me? I'm not a church, but you're still coming, come on, I'm gonna make something of you. I'm gonna clean up your life, I'm gonna forgive you, I'm gonna give you a crown, I'm gonna give you eternal life, I'm gonna put my son's name on you, I'm gonna take you to heaven, I'm gonna give you authority when you get there, you're gonna be my son, my child, and together you're gonna be married to my son, who is the savior of the world." And we had no clue that was going on. And we're gonna see that right now, okay? So let's all run to Luke 14, okay? So if you're in Romans, we just looked at Romans, it's like three books back, we're gonna go to Luke 14, okay? All right, so I think it's gonna be Sister Leslie, no, Sister Esther, who's gonna read, uh, two verses there, and Luke 14, beginning at chapter, I mean, beginning at chapter 14, verses 15 and 16, okay?
Hi, guys.
Yep.
I'm calling this Teresa. It's Teresa, I'm late, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we're in Luke, we're in Luke 14, and by God's grace, I'll try to mail you out your Bible tomorrow, okay? So we're in Luke 14, yes, Luke 14. Okay, Sister Esther, can you read verses 15 and 16?
Let me see here, 14. "And you will be pleased of those they cannot repay you. You will be repaid by misdirection."
I think it's a long, long, long chapter here. So we're in Luke 14, chapter 14 in the book of Luke.
I'm in there.
And verse, verse 15.
Verse 15, okay. I started at verse 11. "Who said to Jesus, 'Blessed is the man who will eat at the feast in, in the kingdom of God.' Jesus required a certain man was preparing a great banquet and invited many guests."
Okay, so here we go. So let's get the picture, there's a crowd there, right? And look at, the, the Lord auto-automatically uses every opportunity to teach the gospel. So here it is, there's someone there that says, "Blessed is he who shall eat bread in the kingdom of God." And the Lord responds back with a parable, and he says, "A certain man gave a great supper and invited many." Okay, so now the Lord Jesus is teaching, this is a parable, this is a story that He created to teach a point. And so it's coming from Jesus' own mouth, so we all need to pay attention. Okay, verse 17 and 18, that'd be Sister Deborah.
"The saints and servants and supper die. To say to those who were invited, 'Come, for all things are now ready. But they all with one accord began to make excuses. The first said to him, 'I have brought a feast of wheat, and I must go and see it. I ask you to have me excuse.'"
Okay, so let's, let's identify the players. So the man who's throwing a big feast, that's God the Father. I believe that the feast, the supper, is, uh, the, the supper of the lamb, right? The marriage supper of the lamb, okay? The first guy then, you, I, instead of wanting, I, I, I can't believe it, I got an invitation to go with the king of kings to go to and sit down with him, right? You would see me as an item, but you know, what did he say? He says, "No, no, no, I just bought a cabin in Lake Tahoe." Are you kidding me? I'm going up to Lake Tahoe, I gotta go check that place out, maybe do a little gambling, you know? Okay, let's see what the other two guys say. Uh, 19 and 20, that's Sister Bernadette.
Okay. Another said, "I have just, just bought five yolk of oxen, and I, I, and I'm on my way to try them out, please excuse me." Still, another said, "I just got married, so I can't come."
Okay, here we go, so this is my, okay, here we go. Yeah, that's what it is, oh boy. Okay, so I, I happen to have my handy dandy modern translation, so here we go. So the guy says, "I have bought the five yolks," here we go, "I bought myself five new tractors with 5,000 horsepower, and I gotta go test them out," right? The other guy. And he, "I've married a wife, and she's hot, and we're going to Las Vegas, that's what we're going to do." So you're gonna tell the king, "What are we gonna do?" "I got my wife, I got my little honey bunny, and I got the tractor trailer, I'm gonna go." And so you're just gonna have to tell God, "Uh, excuse me, I have absolutely no time for that," right? So it makes more sense once we see it, right? In our own, in our own vernacular, right? That's what's happening. Now let's just see how God the Father responds. Let, let's see, you know how people say, "Well, God knows my heart," right? Let's see if He knows our hearts, okay? Verse 21 and 22, that would be Brother Donnie. "And the slave came back and reported this to his master. Then the head of the household became angry and said to his slave, 'Go out at once into the streets and lanes of the city, and bring in here the poor and crippled and blind and lame.' And the slave said, 'Master, what you commanded has been done, and still there is room.'" Okay, so here we go, verse 21, let's take a look at it. "Then the master of the house became angry." And he, you know how we always say, "Well, God understands, He knows my heart." Yeah, He knows that you don't care about it, and you don't got time for that, that's just what it is, it's this right there, he was angry. Said to his servant, "Okay, then, they don't wanna come? Go out quickly into the streets and the lanes and bring." See what's there right there, "Bring them, you just grabbed them." "The poor and the vain and the lame and the blind." What? He would be, he would be saying this, "Go grab them, the poor, the beggars, the homeless, the drug dealers, the dope users, the alcoholics, the street watchers, even the pimps, bring them all, bring them all," right? Because what is, these other guys said, "No, no, I got something, I gotta go over here and check out my, my cabin in Lake Tahoe." The other guy said, "No, no, I gotta go check out these tractors for my property," right? They have 5,000 horsepower, I might even enter them in the tractor pool. And the other guy, he's all stunned on his new wife, going to Las Vegas and all that, right? But what's God looking for? All these poor people, look at what he says, verse 6, Psalm 34, 6 says this, "This poor man cried out, and the Lord heard him, and saved him out of all his troubles." That's what God's looking for. See the difference? These guys all came up with excuses, but God's looking for a poor man to cry out, say, "Lord, I can't do nothing. I have nothing, but if you're looking to have mercy on me, I'll take it with open hands." And saying, "God, please, I need something from you, I might be a beggar, but I'm your beggar." That's what, that's what the man, what David says in Psalm 34. Okay, verse 23 and 24, that would be Sister Leslie.
"Then the master said to the servant, 'Go out into the highways and hedges, and compel them to come in, that my house may be filled. For I say to you, that none of those men who were invited shall taste my supper."
Okay, here we go. So then he got all of us, he, he made us come, and now there's still room. And he says, "Well, go tell them, compel them," right? So the word compelled is, is with the correct translation, compel. The first word was to bring, that's a servant after God, he's bringing in all the poor people, the beggars, the homeless, all of it, right? He's bringing us all in, that's all of us, right? But now he's saying, "Go back out there and compel." I really believe that that's a picture of us going out and doing what Brother Todd was calling to do, to tell him the gospel. Like, say, "Hey, Jesus cuts all the answers to do what Michelle did, and said, 'Hey, Jesus has all the answers to do what Sister Teresa was doing.'" And she went out there and told the, uh, a court of people, "Hey, Jesus cuts all the answers." "Compel them to come," right? Because why? There's still room, because God is doing the party of all parties, He's doing the marriage supper of the lamb, and He wants everybody there. He wants it packed, every, every, every seat filled, and that's our job, okay? So now we see that, this is a picture or a parable of the Jews, they were all, too busy for Jesus. They don't have time to spend with Jesus, they don't have time to hear about Jesus, right? Only the poor did, remember the poor were following them, all the ones that were hungry. They heard, they believed, remember the woman at the well? She believed, she heard, okay? Now we're gonna run over to Matthew 11, and we're gonna see it from a different camera angle, okay? So let's all move over to Matthew 11, that's, uh, one book, two books to the left, okay? Matthew 11, and Jacob is gonna be our reader.
Okay, what verse is this?
Uh, verses 20 and 21 for you.
Okay, verse 20, "Then began to abuse the cities, in which both of his mighty works have been done, because they did not repent. What were you, Horuzon? What were you, Hesita? For if the mighty works which were done in you have been done in Tyre and Sidon, they would have repaired long ago and stacked up in ashes."
Okay, so here we go. Now we can hear the frustration in Christ's voice, right? These are cities from the Jews, and He was doing science, He was dispossessing people, He was healing people, He was healing the lepers, right? And so he would think that, he would think that they would say like, "Man, this is God, God is in the house." And they would repent, but they didn't, they're like, "I don't have time for this." Are you kidding? "I gotta go to Lake Tahoe, I gotta go check out my property, I gotta go check out my tractors, I gotta go to Las Vegas, I got a flight." Are you kidding me? And so what, what he did, he said, "Woe to you, Horuzon, woe to you, Hesita, for if the mighty works which were done here have been done in Tyre and Sidon," right? Two wicked cities, they would have repented long ago and stacked up in ashes. And then he goes on, right? Oh, let's see, verse 22, let's see what else he goes on, Sister Tracy, 22 and 23.
Okay. "But I say to you, it will be more tolerable for Tyre and Sidon in the day of judgment than for you. And you, Capernaum, who are exalted to heaven, will be brought down to Hades, for it, the mighty works which were done to you, have been done in Sodom, it will have remained until this day."
Okay, so Matt, that's, that's a hard word there. So again, he says, "It will be more tolerable for Tyre and Sidon in the day of judgment." In other words, when it's the time of judgment, those people in Tyre, it's gonna go better for them than the Jews, because the Jews had to sign. They had God Himself in the flesh walking among them, right? Because for, if the mighty works were done in you, uh, and you had been done in Sodom, it would have remained until this day. He's talking about Sodom and Gomorrah, right? Okay, verse 24 and 25, that would be Sister Patricia.
Yes, uh, the lady, and maybe, um, I just wanna make sure I'm at the right place. So we're in Matthew 11, verse 24, brother?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you, God. I don't need to read, "But I tell you, that it will be more bearable for Sodom on the day of judgment than for you." Two verses, brother?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
And then we're at the Father revealed and the Son, thank you, God, 25. "At the time Jesus said, 'I praise you, Father, Lord of heaven and earth, because you have hidden these things from the wife and learned and revealed them to little children,' is that it, brother?"
Yep, that's it, okay. So here we go, so he, he's chastising the Jews, Israel, right? And he said, "You guys didn't believe, all this stuff I've done for you, you guys didn't believe." And then he, he's comparing them to Sodom and Gomorrah, he goes, "If I would have done this to Sodom and Gomorrah, they would have repented." But He didn't allow that, He, it said, He destroyed that, right? And so it says this, but look at this, he says, "And you," verse 23, "Capernaum, who are exalted and cried, they thought they had it going on over there, they thought they were like the New York City of Israel, right? He says, "You are exalted to heaven, but you will be brought down to Hades, Hades is a place of holiness, before you get condemned to hell." Right? These are judgments, these are serious things. But then look, verse 25, see how he goes from all this bad judgment, 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 right? Because of unbelief? But then he says this, he's just a rough fucking prayer, and why is he pray, why is he praying and praising God the Father? This is the reason, he says, "I thank you, Father, Lord of heaven and earth, that you have-" that you have hidden these things from the wise and the prudent." Ooh. God the Father is actually hiding it from those who went to the universities, those who went to the centers of higher education, and have revealed them to the fates. Who is the fates? That's all of us. Right? And people that just don't know no better. We just don't know no better. We just believe God. We have zero to offer God, we have zero to offer the world. We just believe God. And he says, "I'll make you kings and priests." Isn't that amazing? Okay, now we're gonna move about five books to the right. We're gonna go to first Corinthians. Okay? And that's gonna be Brother Robert, so let's move to first Corinthians, chapter one. Okay, so everybody should be, first Corinthians is after the book of Romans. Remember we were in the book of Romans, this was? Okay, so Brother Robert? Yep. Verse twenty-six and twenty-seven, Brother Robert's gonna read that.
First Corinthians, chapter one.
Bye, Robert. Brothers and sisters, think of what you were when you were all. Not many of you were wise by human standards. Not many were influential, not many were of noble birth. But God chose the foolish things of the world to shun, to shame the wise. God chose the wicked things of the world to shame the strong. Okay. So, okay, so you see that? It says right here. Or you're seeing your calling, brother, in that not many wise according to the flesh, that means in the natural, not many mighty, right? Not many of you guys were superheroes or warriors or those type of things. Not many noble are called. Verse twenty-seven. "But God has chosen the foolish things of this world to put to shame the wise. And God has chosen the weak things of this world to put to shame the things which are mighty." See how God does things? See, God, I mean, his, his ways are just so fast, you can't search his ways out. Who would've think to do that? Again, if it was the us, we would've been always picking up the, the top player, right? The best players. You, well, they just had the NFL draft, right? They picked out the top players. But God doesn't pick out any of the top players. In fact, he picked out the ones that all went home. They have zero chance. He says, "You, I'll pick you, and I'm gonna make, put you on the Super Bowl team." That's how God does things. Okay, verse twenty-eight and twenty-nine, that would be Sister Esther. Sister Esther, you there? Time's over. Okay.
We had to move inside 'cause the dog, the dog, it's turning. He lifted it up.
All right, let's, where's Sister Esther, buddy?
Where did we leave off?
Okay, first Corinthians, chapter one, verses twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Okay. Uh, "He chose the lowest things of this world and the, and the despised and the things that are not, to nullify the things that are, so that no one may boast before him."
Okay, so here we go. He chose the base things, that means like the lowest things of this earth, right? He, he, not those things that are despised. God has chosen, that's all of us. And the things that are not, we don't have anything, to bring to nothing the things that are. That means like the, the people that have, you know, prestigious, uh, positions, CEOs, CPOs, CFOs, all those different things, right? Hollywood stars or whatever it is, right? And again, sometimes God has mercy on them too, but not generally. Right? Why? Because pride gets in the way. And so what did he do? He chooses the base things, the things that are despised. That's what he goes after. And again, we shouldn't always think that way, but like, I do, I admit it. When I see someone, I'll go to someone who I know looks like they have drug issues or someone who might be homeless or someone who's in need. That's who I'm gonna share the gospel with, 'cause I know God's gonna have mercy on them. If there's someone in a BMW or a Mercedes, they're probably not gonna have mercy on them. He does from time to time. But I just kinda go with the odds, right? And so, okay, the best thing is to be led by the Lord. But you see how he operates? He always, he does these things. He goes to the base things, right? To the humble, to the broken, to the hurting. That's who he goes. Okay? Now we're gonna go see how, this was all prophesied in Isaiah, chapter six. So let's all move to Isaiah. It's in the Old Testament, it's, uh, right before the book of Jeremiah. Uh, the book of Isaiah is right before the book of Jeremiah and right after the Song of Solomon. If you get to Psalm, Psalm, you passed it up. It, it, to the right of Psalm, about two or three books, okay? So let's all go to Isaiah. And our reader's gonna be Sister Deborah. Okay, so Isaiah, chapter six. What's verse? Okay, verse one.
"In the year of..." "In the year of the king, Uzziah died, and saw the lowest things on earth. I came looking up, and the train of the hit this road, this road, filled the temple. Filled the temple. Above it stood a seraphim. Each one had six wings, with two he covered his feet, with two he covered his feet, and with two he grew."
Okay. So this is the temple, the temple of, of Solomon. So it's still there at this point, okay? King Uzziah died, and the prophet, who's Isaiah, he goes in there and he sees a vision, and above the temple, in the temple, is God himself. By the way, does anyone know which person of the Trinity this is sitting here? It is Jesus. Yep. This is Jesus, right? He's sitting in the temple here, okay? Verses three and four, that would be Sister Bernadette.
Uh, we're at, uh, okay. "And they were calling to one another, 'Holy, holy, holy is the Lord Almighty. The whole earth is full of his glory.' At the sound of their voices, the doorposts and thresholds shook, and the temple was filled with rope."
Okay, so, you see that? So there we have, these are special angels, they're there. These are the seraphim, right? And they have six wings, with two wings they're covering their eyes, with two bottom wings they're covering their feet, 'cause he's holy. And with two, they're flying. And they're saying, "Holy, holy, holy is the Lord of hosts." That's one of Jesus' titles right here. "The whole earth is full of his glory." Okay, verses five and six, that would be Brother Donnie.
"Then I said, 'Woe is me, for I am ruined, because I am a man of unclean lips, and I am among a people of unclean lips. My eyes have seen the king, the Lord of hosts.'"
Okay, verse six.
"Then one of the seraphim flew to me with a burning hole in his head, which he had taken from the altar with tongs."
Okay, so here we go. This is a holy scene, I mean, the seraphim with it. This is the only time I've ever seen them pictured in, in, in Scripture, okay? And so they're, they're saying this, you know, "Holy, holy, holy is the Lord of hosts. The whole earth is full of his glory." And this prophet, he's a prophet, he's already written five chapters in the book of Isaiah. Jesus is a holy man of God. But when he is confronted by the holy, holy, holy God the Son, he just begins to melt in his presence. And he says, "Woe is me, for I am undone, because I am a man of unclean lips." So he must've had some bad words he must've said. "And I dwell in the midst of people of unclean lips, for my eyes have seen the king, the Lord of hosts." So if, so there's two things going on here. First of all, it just shows how holy God is. And the second thing is, we should all be convicted and make sure we clean up our language. Because God is listening. And this prophet, he didn't even know what to do. He said, "Oh, my goodness, I'm gonna melt. I'm in the, in the presence of God Almighty." And he is holy, 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 three times. That's the attribute of God. Okay, verse seven and eight, uh, that would be Sister Leslie.
"And he touched my mouth with it and said, 'Behold, this has touched your lips. Your iniquity is taken away, and your sin is purged.' Also I heard the voice of the Lord saying, 'Whom shall I send, and who will go for us?' Then I said, 'Here I am, here I am, send me.'"
Okay, what, look at, two verses, the whole situation turns around. So again, he was in his presence thinking, "Man, all the stuff I've said, and I'm in the presence of God? I'm coming undone." And an angel comes and says, "Take the coat with tongs and touches his lips, his your sin has been purged." And then all of a sudden he hears Christ speaking, this is Jesus speaking. "Whom shall I send, and who, who, and who will go for us?" Okay? So look at that. Who's us? The church. The Trinity. That's right. That's why us is there, that's why it's capitalized. This is all, this is, you see, even though it's Christ there, he's speaking out the half of the training. God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. Okay, then he said, Isaiah says, look at, he was just trembling in fear, but now he says, "Hey, I'll go. If you want me to go, I'll go." And then he, and then verse nine and ten, this is the reason we came here. Uh, Jacob, nine and ten.
And he said, "Go and tell this people, keep on hearing but do not understand. Keep on seeing but do not perceive. Make the heart of this people dull, keep their ears heavy and shut their eyes. Let they see with their eyes and hear with their ears and understand with their heart, and return and be healed."
Okay, so let's look at that really slowly, because if you read this, this is a judgment. We already saw, remember, he was talking about the parable of the sufferer? That's Christ over there in the New Testament, speaking about the parable of the sufferer, right? Remember, the people didn't wanna come. Why didn't they wanna come? Because it's a judgment, it's right here. Remember, he's talking to Isaiah. He says, "Go and preach to them." And then he says this, verse nine. "Go and tell this people, keep on hearing but do not understand." See how that's a judgment? He's saying, "Yeah, go talk to them. They're not gonna understand." "Keep on seeing but they do not perceive. Make the heart of this people dull." See how that's a judgment? So Isaiah goes out there and he's preaching, and they don't hear, they don't understand. Why? Because this is a judgment. Why, what were they doing? Remember, we already covered it. They kept continually worshiping other gods. He kept telling them, "Come back to me, come back." They wouldn't, they kept having affairs with other gods. They kept provoking him to his face. And so now here's a judgment. "Make the heart of this people dull, so they can understand. And their ears heavy, and shut their eyes, lest..." In other words, "unless they see with their eyes and hear with their ears and understand with their hearts and return and be healed." Gee, this is a judgment, everything starts with God. It should give us appreciation that he didn't do that, but in fact, he opened up our ears. He opened up our eyes. He opened up our hearts. Why? Because he just suffered like that. He's merciful. "You don't wanna come? I'll get somebody else who wants to come." Okay? Now, you read Isaiah six, now we're gonna run and see Isaiah in the same chapter, sixty-five. We're only gonna go look at two more verses, okay? So let's all read the chapter sixty-five in the book of Isaiah. Okay? And Sister Tracy is gonna read. And we're gonna start with, uh, verses one and two. Okay? So Sister Tracy, it's Isaiah sixty-five. But if you can't, just read verse one and then pause there for a second, okay? Oops, she might be on mute. Are you there, Sister Tracy?
Okay, there you are. It's done.
Okay.
"I was sought by those who did not ask for me. I was found by those who did not seek me. I said, 'Here I am, here I am,' to the nation that was not called by my name."
Okay, so here we go. So thi- this, this is God speaking again. "I was sought by those who did not ask for me. I was found by those who did not seek me. I said, 'Here I am, here I am,' to a nation, better translated, better translated, a people, non-Jews, that was not called by my name." Who that, who is that? That's all of us. This is God's plan B. Right? He, we were, she was sought by people that didn't even know him. We weren't even looking for him. We were planning to look for him. I wasn't. Right? We were followed by people, but he was sought by people that weren't looking for him. He said, "Here I am, here I am, to people that is not called by his name." That's all of us. Now, verse two, this is going back to the Jews. This is the reason why he called all of us. Verse two, Sister Tracy?
"I have stretched out my hand all day long to the rebellious people, who walk in a way that is not good, according to their own thoughts."
Okay, so this is the reason. Because he had his arms open wide for Israel. "Come to me, come to me, come to me," and they wouldn't come to him. They continually rebelled against him. Right? And he says, "Who walk in a way that is not good, according to their own thoughts." They're doing what they think is right, okay? We're gonna see what they were doing. Verses three and four, that would be Sister Patricia.
Yes, sir. Right here, three and four. Uh, it's eight people, is that where you're at?
Yep.
People? Okay, thank you, Jesus. "A people who continually prooled me to my very face, offering sacrifices in garden..." This is God speaking, right? "...and burning incense on altars and brick." Number four. Verse four, sorry. Um, "Who sit among the graves and spend their nights keeping secret visual, who eat the flesh of caves, and those pots hold broth and infure me." Is that it?
So go ahead and read that, the last verse five, that's all right.
Okay, so we're at verse five. Thank you, God. "Who say, 'Keep away, don't come near me. For I'm too sacred for you. For I'm too sacred for you,' exclamation mark. Such people are smoke in my nostrils, a fire that keeps burning all day." Period.
Okay. So here we go. This is their response, okay? So he's saying, this is why he cut them off here. Why? Because they provoked me to anger continually to my face. They do it in his face, remember? They took the idols right there in the temple. "Who sacrificing gardens, who burn incense on altars of brick, who sit among the graves," right, hanging out with all the dead people, "who spend the night in tombs, who eat twine blessed," remember, pig meat, they weren't supposed to be eating no kind of pig, "and the broth of the vulnerable things in their vessels." Here we go, verse five. "Who say, 'Keep to yourself, do not come near me, for I am holier than you.'" Imagine? Remember, what God wanted to hear was King, what King David said in Psalm thirty-four, six. "This poor man cried out, and the Lord heard him and saved him from all his troubles." That's what he wanted to hear, for them to cry out to them and say, "I'm a poor man, I don't have nothing, God please save me." But instead, they're telling people, "Don't come near me, for I am holier than you." So what does God say? He says, "These are smoke in my nostrils, a fire that burns all day long." Just like when you're at a picnic and that barbecue smoked, it just gets in your eyes and it burns, right? When it puts, putting around that liquid, and then it smells good? That's how those people, that's how he reacts to what they're saying and what they're doing. Right? And so again, that was God's plan A, is for Israel to come. They don't come? What does he do? He goes to plan B. What's plan B? What's plan B? All of us. Remember, they wouldn't come to suffer. So he set this service, and they got the lame, the broken, the poor, the homeless, the drug users, the drug dealers, he gets all of those people, right? And here we see, he was sought by those who did not ask for him. He was sought by those who did not, did not seek him. He said, I said, here I am, here I am, to a nation, all of us again, who are not called by his name. See how God does those things? We didn't find him, we, I know everyone says that we found him, or we found the Lord back in nineteen eighty-two, but the thing is, he already had us in mind. He was already willing to bring us. Right? That's the truth. So again, what we're gonna do to finish, finish up the, the study, and I think I, I, we, we know where this was before, but I'm just gonna share it a little bit different way. So when I went to India, back, I think it was like in twenty-eleven, the Lord was like, uh, all of a sudden he just started bringing up this story. And it was like, it sounded so crazy to me, that I just felt like, it can't be from God. And so I kept saying, Lord, is this from you? And then literally he would create the scene, so I could see the scene. Right? And so it had to do with the puppy story, I call it the puppy story, right? And so he had me later to, to make like a message for it, and then like to make a devotional. And so I read it before, but it really shows you how God does these things. Remember, the Bible says, I will have mercy whom I choose to have mercy, and I will have compassion whom I choose to have compassion. And this, and this is like a little parable, right? He gave it to me, I'm telling you, I didn't come up with this idea. He gave it to me, and he literally put it together scene by scene. And so I'm gonna read it, but the, the difference is, last time I read it, and, and I think it blessed everybody, but what I didn't read was the verses. And so what we're gonna do this time is, Sister, uh, Tracy and Sister Leslie are gonna help. And so as I'm reading the devotional, you guys can just listen, it, it, it was what I call the little puppy story, right? They're gonna read the verses, so you can see that this has been God's plan from the beginning in the Bible, it's once through the entire Bible. And so the verses come from the New Testament and the Old Testament, okay? And so, uh, I'm just gonna start reading, and they're gonna jump in when the verses come up to play, okay? So just kinda listen in, okay? Uh, okay, here we go. There was a lady with a purebred show puppy to sell, and placed an ad in the local paper. And so a wealthy older man instructed his assistant to place a call, to see if these puppies were still available, and to verify that they were top quality purebred show puppies. The lady assured him that they were both available and the very best of the best. The wealthy man then had his assistant drive them over to meet with the lady.
The wind blows where it wishes, and you hear the sound of it, but cannot tell where it comes from and where it goes. So is everyone who is born of the Spirit, John three eight.
Now, as the lady opened the door to allow the wealthy man to enter in, her eyes grew big, as she gently grew fat, and a bit startled, covered her lips, and exclaimed, oh my, recognizing him to be the wealthiest man in the county, and so became quite excited at the possibility of selling him a puppy at a very good price. She then bought out the puppy who was the firstborn, and he was nearly perfect in form and appearance. His body, color, muscle, eyes, the whole package, he simply was very much quite the specimen. The wealthy man looked at him, and with a slight affirm- affirming nod, said impressive, but asked to see another puppy. She then bought out the second one, which is by far the prettiest dog. She was absolutely stunning tan, with a beautiful glowing coat, white tips on three paws, and with the exception of the front left, but around the left side, the same exact pattern appeared. It was very unusual, special, and of course, especially cute. As the wealthy man viewed them both, he asked if there were any others, and there was. The next puppy had the clearest sides of them all, and escaped an extremely bright countenance, and was by far the most intelligent of the three. Even though the puppies were only a few weeks old, the lady had already thought the one to roll over was instantly true in response on the wealthy man, who remarked in the same manner, very impressive. As the man contemplated which one to choose, he asked to see the pair, for the man was not only wealthy, but the man was wise as well.
For my thoughts are not your thoughts, nor are your ways my ways, says the Lord. For as the heavens are higher than the earth, so are my eyes higher than your ways. My ways are higher than yours, and my thoughts, and your, and your thoughts, Isaiah fifty-five eight nine.
The lady told him yes, and that they were in the past. He looked over through the glass window, and saw a very impressive, three-time best of show champion father. The lady then pointed out the mother, which was just as impressive. The wealthy and wise man asked if she could bring her in, and the lady responded that she could, but that the puppies will want to nurse. And so the wealthy and wise man responded that that would be fine, that it would help him to select the right puppy. As the mother entered in, the puppies immediately ran over to nurse, just as the lady had stated. And soon, the firstborn had muscled the other two out of his way.
Therefore, thus says the Lord God to them, behold, I myself will judge between the fat and the lean sheep, because you have pushed with side and shoulder, butted all the weak ones with your horns, and scattered them abroad, Ezekiel thirty-four twenty and twenty-one.
Next, the smart one sounded opening, cleverly rolling in, just as he had been taught the, uh, just as he had been taught and began to nurse. But the pretty one ended up drifting off into a mirror, mounted upon the wall, and began a curiously look at itself, tilting its head from one side to the other as it barked, simply adorable. Suddenly, out of the back room, the wealthy and wise man could hear what sounded like whimpering. He then asked the lady if there was yet another puppy. The lady softly looked down and said quietly that there was, that this particular litter included a small one, which she explained, and had not, and which she explained had not happened before. The lady did not want the one to diminish the value of the other, and so she did not mention it. Suddenly, there was a small disturbance in the back room. The sound of the cardboard box flipping over was heard, and as a complete surprise to the lady, the little one somehow crawled out of the back room, apparently in the hopes of nursing from its mother. The one struggled to walk, as it was very small, sickly, whimpering, darker in color, and sadly enough, appeared to be blind. As the one searched to find the mother, drawing near to the big firstborn, snapped at him with a sharp puppy bark, while the smart one softly growled at it, and the mother pushed it aside with her hind leg.
When my father and my mother forsake me, then the Lord will take care of me, Psalm twenty-seven ten.
But the little one, seemingly unaware, continued to struggle to nurse with great difficulty, calling ever forward, and as it blindly swung its mouth from left to right. Now, the one disoriented mistakenly called its way toward the wealthy and wise man.
I was sought by those who did not ask for me. I was found by those who did not seek me. I said, here I am, here I am, to a nation that was not called by my name, Isaiah sixty-five one.
Reaching and leaving a smear on his impressively polished shoes with its tiny mouth.
For all have sinned and fallen short of the glory of God.
Which surprisingly generated a gentle sigh of compassion from him, and a quite surprising and rare display of emotion. Now, the lady, watching all of this, quickly picked up the rough puppy, grabbed the little body she, model she had prepared, hidden behind a photo near where she stood, and began to nurse it by hand. With great disappointment in her voice, she told the wealthy and wise man that it was a shame, how the parents had been purebred show winners, and how this puppy should have been the same, but it now looked like it probably wouldn't make it. She shared that she was surprised it was still alive, but with some embarrassment and a bit of shame in her voice, confessed that she had been hoping it would simply die, as the one required bottle feeds every two hours, a whole lot of attention, and too much care, much, much more than she was willing to offer.
Now I pitied you to do any of these things for you, to have compassion on you, but you were thrown out into the open field, where you yourself were loathed on the day you were born, Ezekiel sixteen five.
The lady caught herself complaining, and so quickly moved to get back to the tale, asking the wealthy and wise man if the puppy was going to be for him. And he told her no, that it was going to be for his son, and that his son was a special boy, and so the puppy had to be a perfect match for him. She then asked the wealthy and wise man what made his son so special. And so he answered, uh, he answered her with a gleam in his eye, and tender admiration in his voice, because he had only known him alone since birth, and because it was only the two of them, they had an especially close relationship, explaining that he loved his son more than life itself. He continued to share with the lady, that although his son knew they were extremely wealthy, he was the meekest and kindest and humblest, most loving boy he had ever known or met.
Behold, your king is coming, and he is just and having salvation, lowly and riding on a donkey, the cork of a donkey, Zechariah nine nine.
Now, it seemed as though he only lived to praise him as father.
And suddenly, a voice came from heaven, saying, this is my beloved son, and who I am well pleased, Matthew three seventeen.
He went on to share how he had never asked him for anything, not, not one thing ever, but simply was content and found joy in doing the things asked of him, and pleased him.
Jesus said to him, my food is to do the will, my food is to do the will of him and who sent me, and to finish his work, John four thirty-six.
He then continued, he then continued on explaining that this would be the first gift he would ever bestow upon his son, which was the reason why it had to be a perfect match for him.
I have manifested your name to the men to whom you have given me out of the world. They were yours, you give them to me, and they have kept your word, John seventeen six.
The lady smiled, acknowledging that she understood, and so recommended either the big firstborn, or the very intelligent one, that had already learned its first tricks. But as the wealthy and wise man stood there looking at them, he gently nodded his head, and said he knew which one was the right puppy for his son. And so with great excitement, she said, the big one? But he said, no. Then looking down, said, the smart one?
At that time, Jesus answered and said, I thank you, Father, Lord of heaven and earth, that you have hidden these things from the wise and prudent, and have revealed them to the babe, Matthew eleven twenty-five.
And again, she looked, he shook his head, no. Then she motioned over towards the pretty one, which was still looking at herself in the mirror. Yet for the third time, he shook his head and said, no. Disappointed, she lowered her head and asked if it was another puppy he had seen before coming over, and again, he said, no. As he gently reached over for the rough puppy, which was still nursing in her hands.
I will be gracious to whom I will be gracious, and I will have compassion on whom I will have compassion, Exodus thirty-three ninety.
Completely shocked and astonished, with a good measure of disappointment, the lady asked, why? That this one would probably die, but the wealthy and wise man said that's exactly why.
The Lord did not set his love on you, nor choose you, because you were more in number than any other people, for you were the least of all people, but because the Lord loves you, Deuteronomy seven seven.
You see, madam, he continued, this one will need all my first attention, time and devotion in order to survive. And if this survives, there was, relationship will be an unbreakable one. This puppy will be devoted to and love my son with a special kind of love, completely trusting in him alone like no other. In like manner, my son will care for this puppy more than anything, not only because he will have had compassion on it, nursing it back to health with great patience, suffering and love, but even beyond all this, because it will have been the very first and only gift that he will ever receive from me, and so he will treasure it for life.
Then one of the seven angels who had the seven bowls filled with seven last pikes came to me and talked with me, saying, come, I will show you the bride, the lamb's wife, Revelation twenty-one nine.
The wealthy and wise man then asked the lady what she was going to sell the big one for, and she said, two thousand dollars, because he was going to be a guaranteed show winner. And so he answered that he would give her ten thousand dollars for the sickly and blind little one. Once again, the, the great astonishment, once again, with great astonishment, said, why would you do that? I was hoping to myself that it would just die, and now you want to pay ten thousand dollars for it? That doesn't make sense. But the wise and, and, well, the wealthy and wise man greatly, uh, gently said that he did, for the simple fact that he wanted everyone to know and understand that he gave much, much more than anyone could ever imagine or expect for the gift that was to be for his son, his only son.
For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whoever believes in him should not perish but have everlasting life, John three sixteen.
Amen. And now we can see where the rough puppies. Or he could have had anything he wanted.
Oh, that was so beautiful, I'm up in tears, brother. I, wow.
He could have had anyone, he could have had the firstborn, he could have had the smart one, he could have had the good-looking one, and he said, no. I'm gonna take the little broken one, the one that's blind, the one that's hurt, the one that's sick, the one that nobody wants. And that's the one I want. And that's why in Romans four one, it says, I beseech you therefore, brethren, by the mercy of God, because you're the rough puppies, that you present your body a living sacrifice, holy and accepted of God, which is your reasonable service. Amen.
Wow. What, wow. So beautiful, oh my God.
Praise the Lord, that's his story.
Praise the Lord, thank you, God.
Amen. Okay, Brother Donnie, do you have a song to close with out of worship?
Yes, uh, I'm gonna close the song in a song called, You're a Good Dude Father. Here it goes. Oh, I'm on the phone, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Maybe it's too late, but I'm just trying to be a little more. Do you want to be my big girl? It's all, you need to touch me, darling. (Singing)
Glory to God. For it is good. For it is good.
Amen.
Glory to God. Oh, yeah. What a beautiful song that was. Yeah, amen.
I need a cough drop.
You're okay. Where's Jesse?
I don't know. I'm here. I'm here, sorry.
Oh, there he is. Where's Jesse?
No, I was doing.
Maybe he's asleep. Jesse, name of the song.
What was it? Brother Donnie knows. I think it's, "You're a Good Good Father." And so again, you know, I talked to Brother Donnie earlier and I told him that we were gonna, you know, have different scripture verses. So just pray, not the Lord, but what he would have you sing. So this is the perfect song for the devotional. And again, that story was the Lord's story. He literally put this all together. He got me writing and all of that, right? And so again, it teaches us that we didn't have nothing coming. There was nothing good in us, period. But you know, God looked over and said, "That one. That one that's sick, that one that no one believed in, that one that's hurting, that's the one I want." And he just grabbed us. And he gently gave us to the Son. And the Son gently nursed us back to health. And we kept waking up at midnight, three in the morning, four in the morning, and he just kept nursing us and cleaning us and getting us. And he brought us into maturity. And so because of all those things, now we should be grateful. We should be the most grateful people on the planet. We should be the most joyful people on the planet. And we should be the most serving people, serving our God and not our spouse, right? Okay, let me close this out here in prayer. Father, we just thank you, Lord God, for all the scripture verses. But we also thank you for your story about this little puppy that showed that we're just all little wet puppies, Lord God. You could have had anything. You could have said your love and your affection on anyone. But Lord, you chose the broken, the hurting, the lost, the orphaned, all of us, Lord God. And we just thank you, Lord God. Father, help us, Lord God, to be appreciative of this. Help us, Lord God, to remain completely broken, and meek, and humble before you, O God, and before all others. And Lord, help us to tell people that there is a God in heaven who will take you, even though you're broken, even though you're sick, even though you don't have anything, even though you lost everything. And you'll clean us up. You will forgive our sins. You will give us eternal lives, and you will write our names in the Lamb's book of life. Father, I pray for everyone on the call, Lord God, especially the prayer we got you read earlier. I just ask that you appear with us all, Lord God, and help us to rejoice in your goodness, for you are a good, good Father. We love you. We praise you. We bless your holy name. And it is in your stand in our standing, and we pray, O Lord Jesus Christ, that he is, and we pray. Amen.
Glory to God. I have a small testimony to give before you guys go. Um, so before, during the Bible study group, my stomach was hurting, right? I was like, oh, man, I don't know what to do. I'm just gonna hold it over. But by the grace of God, my stomach's not hurting anymore.
Oh, praise the Lord. Yep, the Lord took your little wet puppy and healed his little puppy, right?
Amen. God bless your brothers and sisters. Have a great night. Thank you, Jesse, your brother Donnie, for Bible study group and glory to God. God bless. Again, amen, 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 amen.